Smith?
Here.
Thrash?
Here.
Vincenta?
Here.
Two members out?
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the minutes from the August 7th regular meeting. Is everyone received their copy of those minutes? Does anyone have any questions on this? There anyone who hasn't received their minutes? Okay, hearing no questions, entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the August 7th regular meeting.
I might motion to accept the minutes.
I need a second. Jake can take a roll call vote please.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
August 7th minutes are official. The next hundred minutes is the August 8th special meeting. Has everyone received their copy of those? Any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion in a second.
I have the motion to accept those minutes.
Okay, would you take a roll call vote please?
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, the minutes from the regular August 7th and the August 8th special meeting have been approved. Okay, the first item under due business, we had a couple of questions. This might be a little bit early, but I guess there's some functions going on at the school involving the elementary and a couple of class programs, and they wanted to get a clarification on the dates for trick or treat, since it doesn't affect by any football games or playoffs that might occur by then, and they don't want the elementary kids to miss trick or treat, so they were looking at making sure they didn't schedule anything on the nights that the city would have trick or treat. So, at this time, the normal procedure other than special situations, council has always approved trick or treat on October 31st from 6:00 to 7:30 was what they always was, so if anybody has any discussion or comments, we can get that passed tonight. This requires a motion and a vote.
And that's a Tuesday night, just saying that.
Yeah, that's a Tuesday night, and it doesn't interfere with anything, but again, like I said, they just want to make sure that they didn't schedule things that would cause the elementary kids to miss trick or treat, so.
So what time would it be?
The normal trick or treat has always been the 31st from 6:00 to 7:30.
The 31st from 6:00 to 7:30?
Right on the 31st. If someone from council would like to make a motion.
Well, I just wanted to do a question.
Any question?
Would police chief have anything he knows is going on, or any objections to?
No objections, no. It just feels kind of early to me.
Well, I understand that, but that's the whole purpose. They want to make sure there's not a conflict.
There have been so many phone calls to the rec center about this, you can't believe it.
And that's the normal date. They just, basically, they want to make sure they schedule around trick or treat for the kids.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Matt, do you feel like that time is good? Do you feel like, I mean, I'm just speaking, remembering when my kids were growing up, do you think it might be better if it's like 5:30 to 7:00 instead of 6:00 to 7:30?
I mean.
Or is that too much traffic in town, like rural states?
Yeah, that's what, that's kind of what you're dealing with.
Okay.
Later in the evening, the after-work traffic dies down a little bit, and then, I know a lot of kids, their costumes and everything is here to be glowing or whatever in nighttime.
Okay, so you're okay with that time?
Yeah, we've never had, we've never really had any issues during Halloween, but we make a strong presence, two cruisers in every, we split the city into quads, and we have two cruisers in each quad.
I think there's also a competition question from some of the parents, when it does fall during the week while they're working, the time they get home is sometimes, depending on where they're at, it's a rush for them to get home and get their kids out. Weekend's not as much of a problem, but that's, that's pretty much why I think they've always, as long as I can remember, it's been 6:00 to 7:30, and that's everybody off the street, but it's still a little bit of daylight.
So are we changing clocks this year? Did they get rid of daylight savings? No. I would change it.
I hope they're supposed to change what, one more time?
And then is that November? So that wouldn't?
No, they should do it before Halloween, so.
I thought it was like.
First weekend.
What are they doing again? Are they doing it again? I think so. Okay. I'll make the motion that trick or treat be on Tuesday, October 31st, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Can I just ask one more question? I'm sorry. That's okay. With the motion, so I.
Motion's all it needs.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So the administration, how do they feel about trick or treat?
I'm awesome. Oh, you mean that?
No, I mean, like, are you guys supportive of doing this?
Yes, absolutely. Safe trick or treating, and as long as we run it by Chief, and he's good with what's set down, I feel really good about it.
Okay.
In fact, I was slapping those at my house in place welcome, like they always are to rehear.
I'll second.
Okay, take a roll call vote please.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, the next item, there was questions of whether council was going to approve again the Boo at the Bike Trail, which would be the preceding October 24th from 4 to 6. Any discussion on that? Anybody have anything they want to add?
It's not in their brochure, but I'm guessing our rec department will be taking the big inflatable Halloween things and doing the tunnel again, too, so that's been a big hit for kids like that, but I don't think it's on there, just so you know.
So again, if council's in favor of going the Boo at the Bike Trail again, then that also just requires just a motion and a vote. Anybody has any other comments or questions?
And so the earliness of this year is just because people have already been calling, so there's been a request for us to do this, make this earlier, make the announcements earlier rather than later.
Yes.
Okay. Who is it?
I'll make the motion for the Boo at the Bike Trail.
You second?
Second.
Take a roll call vote.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hooprich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, Boo at the Bike Trail, October 24th, has also been passed. Okay, we'll move on to the reports. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. During the last two-week period, I've been in meetings with our service director, we met with the fire chief, Chief Hall, and Assistant Chief Grady concerning some of the concerns of the fire department. Had several meetings this week and interviews for jobs and different things. Had the pleasure of attending the American Legion picnic on August the 12th. I'd like to thank the Legion for their strong commitment to our veterans. Sat in on an EPA Zoom meeting with Jeremy regarding the tank. Attended the Omega Lunch on Tuesday, the 15th. I was able to speak and network with Congressman Johnson, and to network with Senator Vance's representatives concerning some issues and concerns that I have. Met with Wendy Anderson from the Chamber to talk about the Christmas parade and other upcoming events, and attended an open house at Bardolos Engineering, which was formerly H.A. Smith's, congratulations on their merger. Been talking to a lot of citizens about concerns they may have. I've been driving around the city on hot days delivering freeze pops to our workers. I don't know, maybe it's not very dignified, but I want to keep them from having heat strip. Again, this is out of my pocket, but I'm very happy to do it. And I also think it's time to talk a little bit. We are in an election year, and I just want to remind everybody of some of the wonderful things that we have accomplished as council and a mayor in this four years. We prevented the sale of water to Aqua. We settled two lawsuits the city was spending huge amounts on with lawyer fees. We moved away from chlorine tablets in the water plant, saving the city approximately $129,600 per year. We put new competent people in finance and service director positions. We fired Jeffrey Leroux, the PR person that the previous service director had rang in his council reports, saving a total of $30,426. We were able to maximize and wisely spend our COVID money. We've been buying gently-used cruisers for the police, and that saved approximately $30,000. We acquired two police dogs largely through donations and networking that Chief has done to keep our city safe and to get drugs out of the city. I know they had another big drug bust during this two-week period. Maybe Chief can talk to that. We filled the vacant space that was promised when the dispatchers were let go. Wastewater Superintendent was hired to replace an outside contract firm, saving at least $10,000 a year. We acquired a full-time employee rather than paying $10,000 more for part-time help. We acquired leak-detection equipment to more quickly and efficiently find water line breaks. And we were able to broker the sale of the fire department building to the fire department, so they can now apply for grants and loans to enable them to update the building and stay in town. We switched city insurance, saving ourselves $40,000 a year. So I just wanted to make sure everybody remembers that. There's an awful lot to be proud of. My hat is off to you guys. We couldn't have done it without council and this side working together. I'm very proud of you, so I just wanted to bring some of them out. Thank you, that's it.
Anybody have any comments or questions for the mayor? Okay, move on to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, council. Council items for us tonight, we've got 202326, the supplemental appropriations. I do believe there's emergency language in that. 202327, make the fund transfers, and emergency language in that. 202328 is amending an error in legislation in 202315, that I do believe was the.
What rate?
The water rate. There was a number transposed, which actually is cheaper in what we're doing, but we have to come back through and fix it. 202329, amending 202321. And then 202330, I need permission from council to seek a submission to Ohio Public Works for the big sinkhole in St. Clair Central Park. If anyone wants to see what we're proposing and about how much what we're thinking, feel free to come over and meet with me. Meeting-wise, been a busy couple of weeks. I've actually had 30 different meetings between now and the last one. The most important one probably today was, had a phone call with the engineer about the Dorothy water tank. He had admitted to me that they did not get a permit for the tank at its current location, but he had also had an email that was only sent out to council members on August 10th discussing the permit to install and the notice of violation. So with that, I'd like to ask for an executive session later on to discuss this. Completed projects, water node meter installations, we're constantly doing them. We repaired the sinkhole on Shepherd Terrace, had an EPA meeting about the Dorothy water tank. Negotiated easements and temporary construction easements for the West End Route 40 waterline project. We're waiting on the paperwork to come back from the owners. The I-70 waterline crossing, all the pipes have been installed. It's, we are having an issue with some air in the line. We're going to have to flush it out to try and make sure that that works. We did locate the sewer manholes and Grady and the no-name alleys in the fourth ward. Culvert replacements on Spring Park and Elm Streets are completed. Federal EPA inspection report, finished reviewing that and submitted some corrections back to them. Once those corrections are corrected, I will get that report to council. Water distribution project, they're working their way down the north side of Route 40. We had our construction meeting number five, and I do believe all of the Spring Park services or most of them have been hooked up to the new line. Still working with them on better communication for things. But upcoming projects, we've got a couple of them here, probably the big one, and we'll have a code red going out for this later. We've got a meeting tomorrow at 9:00, and we'll have a determination whether this is going to go. AEP is proposing a tentative power outage this Friday at midnight, so starting Friday at midnight to Saturday at noon, 12 hours. Now, this was supposed to happen a couple of weeks ago. It was postponed because of the weather and that, and we see tentative power outage because if our power loads are low enough, we can feed the city from the one substation. But if it's going to be as hot as it is, I don't know if we're going to be able to do that or not. So we'll have more information on this coming out tomorrow, once Donnie has his meeting tomorrow with AEP to confirm things. Rec Center Jim, HVAC unit's been ordered, still working on phase 1 and 2A project easements. Efall sewer pump, the second pump is ready to install, we have to just get that in. We also did some probing on Walnut for additional water line that's going to need to be replaced. Bearing for the third screw pump, the sewer plant still is being rebuilt. Working with the engineer on the sinkhole, that's this project we're going to submit for funding for. Working with them on the bypass road on North Market Street. We still have a sinkhole on Thompson, still one on Johnette, still one on Jefferson. We're doing some additional culvert work at Spring Park to finish that out down there. The Route 40 waterline extension project is going to start in probably two weeks. Water distribution project, as more areas of the city are identified and going out for utility locates, we're notifying the citizens with door hangers, code reds, and other things. Still updating the administrative policies and procedures, our standard details for sidewalks and everything, inflow and infiltration control plan. Ask-me negotiations, they were down to a couple of items. I met with them last week. That is finished, so once the union gets the contract formatted, they will submit it to their membership for vote, and then I will bring it to you guys for review and vote upon also. Water tanks, the first water tank, the light bulb right out here, the 1982 tank, was drained over the weekend. It is, was cleaned out today, and it is being refilled now. On Thursday, we're going to clean out the 1929 tank, so we had put out a conservation, a voluntary conservation order to the public last week on this, because we've got these two projects where we're draining the tanks, and then next week, hopefully Board Patrol gets all the air out of the line on all I-70, and then we can all wave goodbye to those nasty red lights.
Have to be more.
Yes, we'll fix that, too. Departments, electric department, it's pretty much the same thing, tree trimming, pole maintenance, service work, disconnect, street lights, meter reading, substation maintenance, vehicle maintenance. Water and wastewater department, cleaning the tanks, water nodes. We're cameraing sewer lines. We located manholes and some alleys. Waterline work, still waiting on the I-70 stuff to get that finished. Distribution, fixing hydrants and box, or curb boxes and valves, all the time, we've had 29 water breaks this year so far, about 16 of them we're estimating because of the water distribution project. Still working on sewer station lift repairs. Street, same pretty much stuff, patching potholes, ditching, street repair, culverts, mowing, and cameraing culverts. Rec Center, we've pretty much wrapped up everything in there. I'm working with Eric on another project that's going to come up for the Junior Fair Building. The measuring of the buildings is going to resume again tomorrow, and he also noted that he had a B problem there today, so we called in an exterminator. Police, not much with you guys. Chief gave the report, and that pretty much wraps up everything, all the fun stuff that we're going on.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Actually, eight questions. So on ordinance 28, what is it, what was the error?
The error is.
It was a number that was transferred.
Yeah, it was for residential and commercial water rates not within city limits. Cost per thousand for the first 2,000 was in the legislation, is $22.96 per 1,000 gallons, and the correct rate was 22.26 per 1,000.
Every cent, section one.
Yeah.
Did I read it? I don't know. Thank you. AEP, why did they turn off the?
They're finishing the 600 AW lines and their general maintenance, so the big utility poles that they put through town, they're finishing up the last work with that, connecting us to their substation that they just put into. Anything else I missed on that?
No, that's pretty much it. So we may not have power. We don't know that yet.
We don't know for sure. The last time, it was scheduled for, I do believe it was an eight-hour one, wasn't it? And then we put it out that we may lose power, but it was a cool enough evening that we were able to sustain from the one substation, the other substation. The temperature is now, we're not sure, but it's one of those things where, you know, we'll work on it. Donnie's got an area, he knows which areas that he's, would dump first and go through it, and then so you would have some areas in the city that have power and some that don't. So what we do is just put it out there that completely that the entire city may be out at one point or another during that 12-hour period.
Could you be out for 12 hours?
No, no, you wouldn't be out for 12 hours. But also Jeremy and I discussed as well, if the customers are, would serve as best they could, but also help facilitate the issue.
Okay. And we'll know more after that meeting, and we'll communicate with residents via code red.
Code red, then we'll have stuff on the website, too.
They don't have code red website. Could something be in the paper, too?
Yes, we'll get it out in the paper, but we wanted to wait until after the meeting, because this has already been postponed at least once. So we didn't, we didn't want to send it out prematurely and then everyone worry about it, and then, oh, we're going to move the date anyway, so it doesn't matter. But the meeting wasn't set up until Tuesday at 9:00 a.m., so I'm thinking probably by 10:00 or 11:00, we'll know for sure, and we'll start disseminating out information.
What percentage of people are in code red these days?
I don't have the exact.
Not enough.
Not enough. Because that, I learned the one out about that little kid miss, and that was helpful.
That was too dumb on Cami.
You know.
Right. Absolutely.
So speaking of if residents can help, how are residents doing with the water conservation? Do we have any numbers to indicate that people are?
Do not know, but I mean, we managed to drain the big, the 500,000-gallon tank this weekend. We operated the plant all weekend. We've been constantly, you know, putting water into the system through the other two tanks and then through the clear well down there, so we've been able to hold our own. But, you know, it's one of those things that just kind of is what it is, that anything that can help, can help. So I know I've been not taking a 10-minute shower, but that's personal, so.
Yeah, that was not a question of mine. Appreciate that.
I'm trying to help you.
It basically came up.
Trying to help you. I am cleaning, though. I am making sure I'm clean, though, but it's in and out real quick.
I'm going to move on to my next question. Is the water fountain at the bike trail fixed?
It is not yet, because we haven't had the guys. We've got the parks in, but we're trying to locate the lines on Walnut, because the contractor's in that area. If we don't get that located, which we did, they could move to another area, and then if they come back, it's going to cost us more to get them in there at work, so it's still on the list.
Just want to keep that on your radar.
Yep.
And I know that you've probably addressed this before, and I apologize, but so Spring Park, that cut-in, done? Are we paving?
The contractor is going to patch, so it's part of the contract for the contractor to come in and patch. We are going to look at doing a paving project that will probably be in spring, just going through, because we still have to get in there and camera the sewer lines, and we still got culverts that we need to check and make sure. But that's kind of the plan where it's going. I was hoping that we could get to it where we could start looking now, but the contractor hasn't done the hookups as fast as I wanted, so that we can get in there and do these other things, but.
But that would be the area where we'd pave?
Yes.
When we start paving, like, that makes sense, we dug it up, we fixed it, we've emerited, we've done everything.
Yes.
We now have an area where we can legitimize it.
Yep.
Ladies and gentlemen, they were putting blacktop patch in the.
Okay. So they've started to patch it already.
Okay. I feel like I've been on council for seven years, and I've never heard the word sinkhole. And now we seem to have all these sinkholes, like, what's happened?
A lot of them are galvanized culverts that have been there for decades. I mean, I would say, and the metal and the galvanized eventually rusts, and so what's happening is they've rusted out, and it creates a void, and as more and more water runs through there, it just roads everything out. I know we had one at Spring Park and then one on Legion Road, other last year than what we've done now, but it just seems like it's, yeah.
Yeah, just like it's the year of the sinkhole?
Yeah, and the problem with it is, is there's not even as much rain as, you know, we're having some more major rain events, but it's not a constant rain, so it's just, here it is, it's the age of it, and then that's what's starting to happen.
Okay. And then you had said, so you sent us an email on August 10th, and said that Quicksaw had admitted that they did not, and if I'm speaking out of turn, and this is an executive stopping, but I guess I just kind of want to understand, if I heard you correctly, that an email that just went to council that ended up in the hands of Quicksaw.
Yes.
So like, I appreciate that my email's a public document. I do understand that, right? So, but I just, I guess I just find that interesting, that that is in the hands, an email sent to seven people.
There was a little bit more. I sent it to the mayor, my assistant, the law director.
The CC list.
Yes, and Jacob, and council president.
So I, but I understood that correctly?
Yes.
On your conversation with the gentleman of Quicksaw.
Yes, he specifically asked me why that was kind of sent out, and I said, well, tell me what's not correct in that email. Did you call the EPA? Yes. Did you admit to not getting the permit for where the tank is built? Yes. Is it four years later? Yes.
Okay.
So.
So I did understand you correctly?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so, all right. And then I think my final question is, what's the expectation for the turnaround time for the contract? I'd like to have time to read the contract, but I also understand that we're.
The union contract?
Yes.
As soon as they can get it gone through, I have no problem getting it unofficially to council members, so they can see it before the union vote, and then you can have a preview of it.
So I now have an issue with that. Right?
Yeah.
I now have an issue with that. I'd like that document to be marked confidential. I'd like that document to be marked not a public document, because if you're going to email a document that you guys have worked hard to negotiate with the union, I want to make sure that we respect confidentiality of that. So I just, I have some concerns now about emails, is I guess what I'm saying. But I'm also saying that I want to have ample time to read the contract before the expectation of us to come back and build. I do believe that's all my questions.
Okay, any other comments or questions? DC?
You said all the projects were done at the rec center. The stall's done?
No, I didn't say they were done. I said they're going to start measuring them again. The lady will be down tomorrow to measure.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yep. Not done yet.
And they're fees there. And they're fees. Lots of fees. And it's not even fair time then.
Yes. Any other questions for the sheriff's director? You're welcome. Okay, move on to Police Chief Matt, your man, Matt, you have your vote?
Sure. Good evening, council. Happy to report, all of our staff are healthy and working. We've made it through vacation season with plenty of cooperation on schedule changes. We're making preparation for the new school year, being back in session. I'd like to say thank you to Harbor Freight for a $300 gift certificate to purchase supplies for the department. Recently got confirmation from the state that our 24 hours of continual professional training, which every officer is required to do for the year, is going to get reimbursed. That was up in the air. It's been, it's August, and they finally made a determination that they will reimburse, so that's about $3,400 in training that will come back to us, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions for chief?
Chief, I just wanted to tell you, I got a text from Danielle Mays a little bit ago. She said she's running late tomorrow. She's got another stop, twelve-thirty is when she'll be here. Thank you.
Can we move on to finance, finance director Annette?
Good evening, everyone. I talked to the finance committee about this, but on September twelfth at eight AM, Opers and conjunction with Colonial Life will be here to offer some plans for anyone that works for ten hours or more a week for the city, if anyone's interested in that. And they will have breakfast, so you can come for breakfast, even if you're not interested. I don't know. And then the audit from, go ahead.
Is that here, that meeting?
It's here.
This room here?
Yep. For twelve, eight AM. I'll be sending out reminders and emails.
Okay.
Still waiting back the results from the twenty-twenty-two audit. I think they've finished asking me all the questions and I'm just waiting to hear back the final results on that. And that's all I have.
Anybody have any comments or questions for the finance director? Thank you again. Can we move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Just a reminder to council, the Dora Committee, that's designated outdoor refreshment area. That committee will be meeting this Wednesday at six PM here in council chambers. Purpose of this meeting.
Is it six or six-thirty? I have six-thirty.
I could be wrong.
Sure, six PM. J.C., Christine?
Looking. I have six-thirty.
Okay, because I'll double-check, but I think it went in the newspaper at six o'clock.
I could do six, but I had six-thirty, too.
Okay, and I can double-check, but I'm pretty sure the newspaper had six o'clock.
Okay, so if that's. Let us know, so.
Absolutely.
You want to give switch, you two? I just, yeah, okay.
The press release said six PM. We got to copy the press release.
Okay, good, good. No, sorry about that confusion, but y'all can be here, that's good. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss the idea of a Dora, what is it? And it's also discussed if any code or guidelines for a Dora, as to see if it's, would fit, be a fit for St. Clair. No decisions are to be made. Again, it's just more of an educational meeting and any council members of the public as well. And J.C., Christine, and Beth, they're on that committee. Second item, the fire department, their project is slowly moving along. They're finalizing some of their plans and plans related to variances. Once they do this, which I'm hoping will be this week, we can set up the required public hearings for those variances. At this point in time, I don't have a date for that. There is a, well, Donnie, Darren and I, we met at Columbia Gas down on Route Nine in the vicinity of Christ the King Church and the Bell Store today, they're going to have an upgrade project. When Bell Store was being constructed, we found out that it was no one's intentional fault, but they had an older line that was bored right through one of our sanitary manholes. I think they were planning on upgrading that Route Nine line anyway, but this kind of, I think pushed that to the fore. So they plan on starting on that this week and rectifying that problem and hopefully not causing any other. So if you do see construction in Columbia Gas trucks in that area, you'll know why and you might want to avoid it. I think they said it might take a couple of weeks because it is a congested area anyway. And this would make it a little bit tougher. They will have flaggers and people working on them. There is a new jewelry business that's opening in, opening in town. It's called River Valley Designs. It'll be at one hundred West Market Street. It's the Zell Building. Right now, that's kind of an incubator building. The owner's plan is that if all goes well, we all hope it does, that they would look at opening in the storefront. So keep your eyes on that. And that's it.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick, the Bell Store, that's going to be right in front of the store, right?
It's going to start, the project will, to make it simple, will be starting around the vicinity of the Bell Store on their concrete apron. It'll then jump across Route Nine to the east side of Route Nine and then head up along the ditch line roughly off the road. Then when they get to that southerly entrance to Christ the King Church, just above that, they'll then bore under, well, they'll open the bore underneath Route Nine and then tie into their existing line, just north of that southerly entrance to Christ the King. Or maybe it's the only entrance off of that property on Route Nine. So it's not a huge or lengthy process. Their ideal plan is to bore everything, but because of other utilities in the area, they might have to do some spot things. Worst-case scenario, if they don't want to do, if some problem arises, they would have to go. But they want to avoid that, like, we want to see a new at all costs.
When's it start?
They were doing some prep work today. I think their plan is to start that project tomorrow. The whole purpose behind it is an improvement, so.
Any other comments or questions for? Okay, hearing that, we'll move on to the council committee reports. Finance, Mr. Ted.
Yes, we had a financial meeting tonight, committee meeting tonight, and that informed us that our revenue is at fifty-eight percent, expenditures are at thirty-nine percent. We are on target for those. Our major accounts are all looking good. We started and discussed some of the budget plans for 2024 and we are asking, you know, if we can just get that budget early for review. Contract talks are pretty much finalized, we're just waiting. The audit is complete and we're just kind of waiting for a final report. Is that correct, Annette?
I'm not sure if it's complete there. It's done on our end.
Okay.
So just waiting on my side.
Okay, thank you. And we have in front of us tonight an ordinance, the twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-six, and it's the supplemental appropriations. And we discussed a lot of that tonight, discussed the reasoning for that. So when we go to start talking about that later on, we'll be open for questions. So if you have any questions, please, please ask those for an explanation. And that is all that I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions right now? Okay, utilities, Tara was unable to make it to see, do you have any?
Love to report, I think the next meeting will be September fifth after later today, it seems.
Six. She changed it to six because AEP's coming.
That's right, six o'clock. I forgot.
Okay. Move on to police, Mike.
No report, but I'm just looking at my calendar here. I think September fourth, is that a holiday?
It is.
Labor Day. The second, I guess the second week meeting is September. Police chief's okay with it, like that meeting after the council meeting, you know that date?
Yep.
Okay, any else, Mike?
No, police.
Okay. Any questions for Mike for the chief? All right, we'll move on to streets north side, Mike.
Yeah, I just had a couple people talk to a guy about a week and a half ago. I'm not sure whatever happened with the water over by the dry cleaners. I think we had a problem with draining somewhere to, I guess, there's a little pool of water there, maybe.
Yeah, that was the one that we had talked to them about and gone through. Part of the problem was the culvers still not there. We don't know where it's coming through at, but one of the ideas was to look at it with this grant that Tom got for us, start looking to satisfy all that drainage in that entire area there.
Okay.
So it's still there, it's just, yeah.
Okay. Then I had another person approach me with the body shop in town. I think there was some water draining into the back of their business?
There was a water line break. When was that? Eight months ago, the other, Mike wasn't here yet, it was still Jason, maybe even longer, because I think it was still warm. So there were some sandbags that we needed to pick out, Darren had known about that, but he hasn't done that yet.
So what can I tell him? Or, I'll tell the other guy.
What, what is it with, is it actually getting water in there or because all that we got from them was to remove the sandbags?
I think there's water going actually into their building.
That's a new one on me, but I'll, we'll check it out.
The body shop over here.
Jeff's?
Jeff's.
Yeah, Whitesides.
Oh, Whitesides. That's a whole nother issue. Okay, so that's a different one. So basically what you've got there is you've got two different property owners that are not in the city or not, not in between the city. So whoever owns the retaining wall, they need to clean out. Whitesides needs to clean out their back of their building. There's still grass growing on their roof.
Can we just clarify where we're talking about?
Right over here, the body shop.
Right behind Wesbanko.
Yeah, right behind Wesbanko.
I talked to Ted about it, too, this week, because they did get water with that big ring last, last week. And if you go look at that, and we got a determine, he said he does not own that wall. And I don't know if it's Wesbanko, but there needs to be some fixing of that, that wall.
That was something that came up last year. We put a curb up down the alley coming through. The county put a curb up down their parking lot, so there's not much else we can do with it. It's a dispute between two property owners.
So we don't own the property behind it?
We don't own the property.
No. And I talked to a surveyor about if he could look and see who does own that wall, because whoever has that wall needs to mitigate some of that dirt on it. And that's going to be a massive project, I think. It's a big stone wall that's sliding.
Sorry, wrong body shop.
It's not an easy fix.
We don't know who owns it?
It's either.
It's either Wesbanko.
Whitesides or Wesbanko.
So Whitesides says.
He said it's not his wall, so.
It's a private property owner dispute.
Okay.
Okay.
I went down, took pictures, if anybody wants to see them.
Streets south side, J.C., you have anything?
No report.
Safety?
No report.
Building and grounds?
We have our monthly meeting tomorrow at six o'clock, the city building. Likely this room because it's going to be a joint meeting with junior sports, which every August, the city is supposed to sit down with junior sports officers, so very excited about that meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. But is it tomorrow?
Twenty-second. Six o'clock. Any questions on that? Okay, Brennan, Commissioner, Christine?
The only thing is the, as Tom mentioned already, the Dora meeting Wednesday, apparently at six PM.
I did confirm that, Jim did, just checked our website. Jim had that public notice. It is six PM.
Any else, any questions? Hey, Linda's in here, Fire District, Recreation, Christine?
Yes, Fall Baseball and Softball League starts next week and runs through the first week of October. Flag Football and Volleyball starts the second week of September. There are a hundred and ninety-four total kids signed up. The drawing for the new bathroom partitions will be done tomorrow morning. And Fall Festival is September ninth. There'll be the Craft and Vendor Fair in the rec center in the morning and then the bands and festivities outside starting at four. There's three bands lined up. Details are on the rec website and the Recreation Facebook page.
I will not be in town for that, but if you would like to borrow my most precious orange Halloween lights to do the tents, you are welcome to. Put them on the front, because it'll be dark by eight o'clock by then, so.
Okay.
I rarely offer this out, that's fine.
Okay, any comments for anybody from, Christine, on Recreation? Okay, Linda, again, out here is the Hennepin Park District. So we want the ordinances, resolutions, law director.
He wants to wait till.
The first one up, you have five pieces of legislation before you tonight. First one is ordinance number twenty-twenty-three twenty-sixth, and that's the ordinance to make supplemental appropriations and revenues for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January one, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and declaring an emergency. And I believe the finance director has already discussed these with the finance committee, so.
Anybody have any questions or anything on that prior to reading the ordinance? Okay, Jake, could you read ordinance twenty-twenty-three twenty-six, please?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three twenty-six, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations and revenues for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January first, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and declaring emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading. There was a request for this to be passed as emergency. Does anybody wish to take further action?
Jim, I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring emergency.
Do we have a second? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to decide whether or not this will be considered emergency legislation.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Opbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
I'll remember your.
Okay, this will be considered emergency. Jake, can we read it?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three twenty-six, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations and revenues for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January first, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the final reading. Does anyone wish to make a motion to pass the ordinance itself? Second. I think a roll call vote for passage of the ordinance.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Opbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
I'll remember your.
Okay, twenty-twenty-three twenty-six has been passed.
Okay, the next one up is ordinance twenty-twenty-three twenty-seven, and that's the ordinance to make an interfund transfer for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January one, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And that's transferring thirty-five thousand from the general fund, which is out into the Parks and Recreation Fund, which is your transfer in.
Okay, question, Jake, could you read that, please?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three twenty-seven, an ordinance to make interfund transfers for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio for the period January first, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-three twenty-seven. Again, emergency, as been requested, they would wish to make a motion.
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second? Vincenza? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to consider emergency.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Opbridge?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
I'll remember your.
Will it be considered? Will be considered, uh, emergency legislation. Uh, Jake, can you read it for the final reading?
Ordinance number 2023-27, an ordinance to make interfund transfers for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period January 1, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anybody wish to make a motion to pass 2023-27? And a second? We'll have to take a roll call vote for passage of the ordinance itself.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, ordinance 2023-27 has been passed.
The next one up is ordinance number 2023-28, and that's an ordinance amending ordinance number 2023-15, in order to correct a typographical error to the residential and commercial water rates not within city limits and declaring an emergency, and that is for your first 2,000 gallons, and when, it's in the original legislation, it's 2296 per 1,000, correct rate's 2226 per 1,000 gallons.
Okay, Jake, can you read ordinance number 2023-28 for the final reading, please?
Ordinance number 2023-28, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2023-15, in order to, to correct a typographical error to the residential and commercial water rates not within city limits and declaring an emergency.
Okay, again, this has been requested as an emergency. Does anybody wish to make a?
I just had a question.
Sure.
Was anybody over built?
Yeah, I caught it.
Yeah, it was caught before. That's why you have an effective date of July 20th, just when you did our stuff.
Thank you.
Good save. Anybody wants to make a motion to consider this emergency?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a second? Okay, take a roll call vote to consider this emergency?
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, 2023-28 will be considered as emergency. Jake, can you read it for the final reading?
Ordinance number 2023-28, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2023-15, in order to correct a typographical error to the residential and commercial water rates not within city limits and declaring an emergency.
Okay, uh, does anyone wish to make the motion to pass as they, or make the motion? Second. Take a roll call vote for passage of the ordinance 2023-28.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, ordinance number 2023-28 has been passed.
The next one up is ordinance number 2023-29, and this is an ordinance amending ordinance 2023-21, in order to provide an effective date for said legislation declaring an emergency. This is the one for the payment of legal fees, and it's, it was council's desire that that effective date of that legislation be January 1, 2023, and this legislation will amend that by adding that effective date.
Okay, Jake, can you read ordinance 2023-29?
Ordinance number 2023-29, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2023-21, in order to provide an effective date for said legislation and declaring an emergency.
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declared an emergency.
Do we have a second? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to consider this emergency legislation.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash? Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, ordinance 2023-29 will be considered as emergency legislation. Jake, can you read it for the final reading?
Ordinance number 2023-29, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2023-21, in order to provide an effective date for said legislation and declaring an emergency.
Okay, does anyone wish to make a motion to pass?
I do.
Make a motion to consider this, passing the 2023-29. We have a second. Take, take a roll call vote to pass ordinance number 2023-29.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Ordinance 2023-29 has been passed, also.
And the last one up tonight is resolution number 2023-30. That's a resolution authorizing Catherine Tholman, Tholman, sorry, mayor of the city of St. Clairsville, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvements and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required in declaring an emergency. Um, just want to note to council that the email, um, came on August 8th with the proposed legislation for this, and it has a September 1st deadline, so that's why there is an emergency on this one.
Question? I mean, I'm all for this, but, but what does this do for the city? I mean, do we, for grants and?
Yes, uh, so the project will go for a certain percentage of grants and then a small amount, uh, for a loan for the project to fix, to fix the big sinkhole in Central Park.
And I urge everybody to look at that, I'm sorry, because it's, it's really turning a lemon into lemonade.
For this, great, not from there has to be an ordinance like that.
Because it's a, how it works, that's.
Yeah, they require that.
Okay. Okay, take the, uh, resolution 2023-30, please.
Resolution number 2023-30, a resolution authorizing Catherine Tholman, mayor of the city of St. Clairsville, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required in declaring an emergency.
Okay, because of time-wise, this is considered emergency. Does anyone wish to?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declared an emergency.
Do we have a second? Take a roll call vote to consider this emergency?
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
Okay, Jake, can we read, uh, we're, resolution 2023-30 for the final reading, please?
Resolution number 2023-30, a resolution authorizing Catherine Tholman, mayor of the city of St. Clairsville, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required in declaring an emergency.
J.C. and Christie, second. Roll call vote.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Resolution 2023-30 has been passed. Okay, at this time, it's the end of what we have on the agenda. Mr. Greenwood has requested an executive session. Uh, this basically has to do with the, uh, pending litigation. Uh, what is the section on that, Elizabeth?
It is 121G3. 121.22G3.
Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session. A second? We'll take a roll call vote.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we will go into executive session, so at this time, uh, I will, uh, take a recess and break for a meeting. Just about, yeah.
We want to leave, we've got a bunch to sign. It's great.
Okay, at this time, we're, towards that.
No pepperoni?
Keep working our way around.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to leave executive session to return to open meeting. Vote.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yep.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, we are now back in regular session. That's the end of the agenda for this evening. The next council meeting will be on Tuesday, September 5th, at 7:00 PM here in the council meeting, because of the holidays.